I am calling the meeting to order at 6:13 PM. Let's start with our Pledge of Allegiance and then we will turn it over to Veronica for a roll call of attendance. Go ahead and join me in unmuting yourselves and begin our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands under the God, under the blessing, that never cease to be just. Thank you, team. Please mute yourselves. Ready, Veronica? Roll call, please.
Roll call for attendance. Ms. Santiago. Mr. Jimenez. Ms. Alfaro.
Present.
Ms. Hernandez. Ms. Garcia.
Present.
Ms. Carlisle.
Present.
And Ms. Velez.
Present.
That's four members present and three absent.
Great. Thank you, Veronica. We have four members with us, team. For those of you joining us at home, thank you. It is our first official school committee meeting of the year. We are here. It is the school year has begun officially. Our city councillor Leo Robertson could not make it tonight. Mr. Jimenez, Ms. Santiago will not be here tonight. And our vice chairwoman Anna Hernandez will be joining us a little late today, but she'll be here. Alrighty, Veronica, may we please let in our public comments participate? Team, I noticed we are officially now live on Facebook. Thank you. We are having a lot of tech issues today. Please bear with us. We will, it's a short agenda today, so should be fairly smooth. Thank you for joining us.
Okay, we have guest speaker Claudio Martinez.
Awesome. Claudio, hello. You have four minutes. Please start with your stating your name, your address, and I'll keep a timer of four minutes. Thank you. Claudio, are you with us?
Maybe they have to unmute themselves, Kelly.
Yes. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you now.
Dear person, Chairperson Garcia, members of the Chelsea School Committee and Superintendent Abeta and members of the public, my name is Claudio Martinez of 35 West Street in Boston. I have been a friend of the city of Chelsea for many, many years and have worked with many civil leaders in the city on several local and statewide projects and campaigns over the years. During the last two years, I've had many opportunities to volunteer in la colaborativa as food pantry and learn about the many challenges and also the many opportunities in this great community. Thank you very much for allowing me today to testify in support of this resolution asking President Biden to cancel all student debt now by executive order, something that he should be able to do without much problems. I'm the Executive Director of Zero Debt Massachusetts, where a student and community organizing initiative was created to amplify the voices of those most affected by a failing higher education system that continues to burden our families and communities with a student debt widening our ever-growing racial generational wealth gap. As a co-founder and former executive director of a thirty-year community-based organization and college preparation program that sent thousands of students to college over the years, and also as the former vice chair of the Boston School Committee, I was able to participate in many of the college access initiatives of the last three decades in the city and state. I think our enthusiasm to see our Black, Latinx, and low-income children in our communities to be the first one to attend college in their families blinded us a little bit from the reality of leaving them and their parents with a lifelong student debt sentence. As the father of a northeastern university graduate who still has a student debt after ten years since he graduated, I know too well the illegal practices used by student loan servicers protected by unfair and predatory state and federal laws. The student debt crisis is not only an economic justice issue, but a gender and racial issue as well. As our nation looks to create a more equitable and just economy, we cannot overlook the longstanding effects of discriminatory economic policies and how our student debt crisis is just another direct reflection of and continues to perpetuate systemic barriers and racial discrimination. And as millions of Americans continue to suffer from the ongoing pandemic, it's important to remember that this crisis has not broken any systems, but rather revealed the ways in which our economic and health system are already deeply dysfunctional. The inequalities that have led to Black and Latinx people, community of colors, and poor people suffering the greatest effects of the ongoing COVID crisis are the very same as those which make those same groups the most vulnerable to the effects of the student debt crisis. Massachusetts alone has close to one million student borrowers with a total combined student debt close to $300. The average payment is almost $400 a month. So it's important that we tell our government and tell our representatives that when they prepare an economic recovery plan, they must protect our student loan borrowers. They are the hardest crisis. The federal government have canceled large amounts of debt from corporations in the past and from Wall Street, and it is time our debts get canceled too. We at Zero Debt Massachusetts are respectfully asking you, members of the Chelsea School Committee, to please consider voting yes, to give our young people a chance to start their families, create new businesses, and pursue higher education without the burden of a student debt. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Claudio. Veronica, we have about, we have one more guest, correct?
No, I believe I'm the only one with Zero Debt Massachusetts today.
Awesome. Thank you. With that, that closes our public section comment. Thank you, Claudio, for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is the presentation on fall, our fall opening, and I will turn it over to our Dr. Abeta.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman Garcia, I'm wondering if we should do our parent liaison presentation first, so we can recognize them first.
Great idea.
The reopening, so if they, the parent liaisons have been so busy this last week, they can leave the meeting if they would like. So I don't know if you want to present them with the thank you and honor them first and before I do my presentation, I will give that to you.
Absolutely. Team, do we have a motion to accept the change in order on the agenda?
Make a motion to move out of order.
And I second it.
Is there? Wonderful. Alrighty, team, I'd like to, I know a lot of our members are eager to thank our parent liaisons, so I am actually going to step back and ask our school committee members if they have anything to share to express gratitude to our wonderful parent liaison. Go ahead and unmute yourselves and you may begin.
Madam Chair, may I go first?
Absolutely. You have the.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to say how proud I am of our parent liaisons here in Chelsea. And I'm gonna go back to the beginning of pandemic and really recognize the Fab Four. In case you don't know who the Fab Four, it is Chrishell Origen at the ELC, Jolanda Bages who was doing the whole complex then, we had Marlene who was doing the middle schools, and Jay at the high school. I was amazed by the work that we're doing, the phone calls that we're getting from the parents during that time. I still was in my job at Capic and they were calling me every day. Janette, I know you know resources, we need this for the parents. And they were working tirelessly to make sure they were providing for the parents. Then along came new members, I don't know all of them, and they have great role models in the Fab Four to learn and take the wheel and go ahead with the dedication that our parent liaisons have. But I also had the opportunity to work very, very briefly with Johnny Giraldo and Sulema, who also hit the ground running. They stepped into the positions and they were already looking for resources, trying to engage in the community and get to know who is who and who they need to know to service the families. So, and then last week, they pulled off the back-to-school celebration, which it was amazing, great. I'm glad I got to at least attend one, but I just want to congratulate you guys, let you know how vital you are to the district. And I've always said, we are a team and without either one of us, we don't function. Everybody, every position in this district is very important. And I think over the years, I've made it very clear that we can't function without the other. And I always thank even from our crossing guards, custodians, cafeteria workers, all the way out, because everybody counts and we need each other. So thank you, thank you very much. I am happy that you guys are getting recognized and continue the amazing work that you do.
Why don't we unmute ourselves and let's give them a round of applause to the Fab Four and all of our parent liaisons? Awesome. Yes, you all deserve so much more. I wish we were in person to give you all a certificate of gratitude. Ms. Carlisle or any other members on the call, do you want to express some or share some words?
I think Mrs. Bezz West, Jeanette did a wonderful job, how we all feel about the parent liaison. They're very important to the Chelsea Public Schools and I really appreciate all the hard work they do. Thank you all and God bless you all for what you do.
Thank you, Ms. Carlisle. Team, I just want to come into the record that Mr. Jimenez joined us. Mr. Jimenez, we are here giving our special thanks to our parent liaisons, and then we will go into presentations. And so before moving on, do you have any words to share?
Yeah, I missed the whole fun stuff, so I'm sorry for that. I was in a work meeting and actually had to run shortly to another work meeting, but I'm glad that I got here now. I just want to say I did have the chance to talk to the parent liaisons at a couple of the back-to-the-school events, so it was really, really great seeing you all there. And thank you so, so much for the work that you do. Community engagement and parent engagement is so, so important to the work that we do. So yeah, just really, really excited to continue seeing your hard work, you know, bear fruit. So thank you.
Madam Chair, can I also say my gratitudes?
Claudio, you have the floor, Ms. Alfaro.
Thank you. Thank you all for what you did during the, and continue to do during this recovery of the COVID-19. Your support has been really, are just appreciated by the community and the students. And thank you for continuing to doing this great job because the pandemic was, I know that the number's still going up and you're still out there. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Alfaro.
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes.
I have to run to another, to another meeting, so I just wanted to see if we could move out of order to do the resolution, because I did want to speak on the resolution and I, since I only have a limited amount of time, was wondering if we could do that. So can I make a motion to move out of order and do the resolution?
We're currently out of order.
Wow, we're out of order already?
Yes. We're out of order.
That's happening during our first meeting.
So we could go to a resolution and then make a motion to go back to order.
Okay.
But we have a second for that. Thank you, Ms. Velez.
I think, Madam Chair, one of the liaisons wanted to say something before we go right into the resolution?
Yes, 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 go ahead.
I guess that will be, I quickly texted somebody that I, that I know, I said, I would like to say thank you. Thank you. This is a great honor, recognition. And I know Jeanette Velez very well. It does take a team, right? And like my mother always says, since I was a, I can remember, it always takes a village, right? So I want to say thank you and I want to, it feels like I want to like a Grammy or whatever, I want to make sure I name all the right people. Daniel Mojica for being a great role model, right? As soon as I stepped into CHS community, Jolanda has been amazing as well. So I want to make sure I say thank you. The Fab Four now is called the Dream Team. Johnny Giraldo Sulema has been a great addition to the, to the parent liaison team. Dr. Abeta, you have been amazing in your support for the parent liaisons. And we recognize that. So we have a saying like, we get the gut feeling and you give all the right feeling. So thank you. I don't know what else to say before my thoughts get all ramble. God bless everyone in here and muchas gracias. Oh, and thanks to the parents and the caregivers and the stakeholders of all CPS community.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Velez. And again, I echo what everyone has mentioned, without our parent liaisons, our families would not feel comfortable to speak in our schools. Thank you. Your work does not go unseen. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Alrighty, team, up next, we have the, the resolution that I proposed. Before we go into vote, I'd like to open up the floor to see if we have any comments. But before we do that, I'd love to share my reason as to why I proposed this resolution. I'm a first-generation student and I grew up in a big household with four siblings. And it was challenging to navigate that journey. And it is still challenging to navigate journey after college with a lot of loans. And so I feel very passionate about canceling student debt and, and I hope that, that we can, we can get through this together as a team. With that, I'd like to open it up to the floor to see if there are any other members who would like to speak on behalf of this resolution. Mr. Jimenez?
Yeah, so I want to say thank you to Chair Garcia for introducing this. I, you know, I also have, have, you know, I'm saddled with student debt, so this, this also comes from a place of kind of personal experience. But I think that, you know, overall, student debt has just grown far too high over the last decades, you know, back in the sixties, the seventies prior, right? We invested a lot more in higher ed than we do today. And that's how people were able to get a college education and they could still buy a home or like not be saddled with that for decades and decades after. And this, this investment in higher ed has really ballooned the cost of higher ed. And now someone who graduated eight years ago still can end up having $41,561.62 in student debt, which is my current amount. And student debt is economically harmful for individuals because it prevents us from social mobility, right? But it's also harmful for the economy as a whole. An entire generation, right, has been placed on hold in terms of economic activity because we have to prioritize paying loans over supporting our families. I do want to recognize that I have been able to complete my degree, get a job, and would likely be able to pay off my debt in another 10 years or so, but I am not most borrowers. The median student loan debt is only $17,000. Many, many borrowers don't finish their degree and they're saddled with debt without the benefits of that degree. And so those people are also disproportionately people of color. So to me, this is not only an economic justice issue, but a racial justice issue. And I also wanted to shout out the work that Congresswoman Presley has been spearheading around this issue. She's been pushing the Biden administration to cancel all student debt to make sure that we're empowering the people of Chelsea and the people of the United States instead of the banks, right? We need to make sure that people are empowered so that we can move forward. I'm fully in support of this resolution, really, really excited when I saw it on the, on the agenda, because it's an issue that I care very deeply about. And I hope that, you know, my colleagues will join me in standing for this important tool for equity. So thank you, Chairwoman Garcia, and thank you, everyone.
And fun fact, if this passes, we would be the first city in Massachusetts to do so. So, any other comments from the school committee members? No? Alrighty, team, I will go ahead and read the resolution for us. This is a resolution calling on the federal government to cancel all student debt, whereas canceling student loan debt and eliminating debt in higher education represents an enormous economic opportunity for Chelsea to create better jobs, increase spending in our local communities, support upward social ability for individuals, and provide a deeply needed stimulus during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, while student debt is a burden experienced by a wide variety of people, including both young adult and older residents, it disproportionately impacts low-income, Black, Latinx, Indigenous, Asian, Asian and Pacific Islander, and other communities of color. And whereas, like, sorry, the abolition of student debt also represents an incredible moral opportunity for Chelsea to support residents, address racial and gender wage gaps, and provide better overall health outcomes to the general population, since that is associated with negative mental and physical health outcomes like stress, depression, general health, obese, obesity, and mortality. And whereas, canceling student debt is a policy that is strongly supported across the country with President Biden having publicly expressed interest in some form of student debt cancellation. And whereas, student debt cancellation is only one step toward relief and a better higher education system, and examples locally and internationally, I'm sorry, wait, yes, internationally show the need for elimination of full student loan debt and investment in, and pathways toward programs to support higher education as public good. And whereas, we have an obligation as a Chelsea School Committee to fight for justice in all spaces, particularly as it relates to economic empowerment and education. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Chelsea School Committee calls for the federal government to commit to cancel all student debt and that the President Biden enact a plan by the end of this first hundred days in office to cancel student debt and to begin the transition to education as public good. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to accept the resolution calling on the federal government to cancel all student debt. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle? Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's five in the affirmative and two absent.
Five in the affirmative. Motion carries. Thank you. Alrighty, team, do we have a motion to go back into order?
Make a motion to go back to order.
Second.
Dr. Abeta, I turn it back to you for our presentation for tonight.
We'll go ahead and get started, and then this is going to be like the relay race. I will pass the baton to my wonderful team and whoever's over that area will share about how we're preparing for reopening of schools. School starts as a reminder September 1st for K through 12, and then September 8th for our pre-K and kindergarten. And we're really excited about this year. We just finished our two-day retreat with our leaders in Chelsea Public Schools and we're just really excited. And the theme that we are sharing is that we will know everyone, all of our students by names, strengths, and story. And so we're focused on relationships and we're also focused on the theme of we are family. So we're just really excited to start the school year in person. And I'm going to go through and we're going to tell you all that we've been doing. So we can go ahead and get started. So first, we'll talk about, mostly a lot about safety, because we want everyone to know that we're, we are focused on safety in light of COVID, masks, COVID safety checks, vaccinations, building safety, and then staffing, because we are real excited about what we've been doing with staffing. And then questions and comments. So I will start with masks and then I'm going to hand it over to Adam. So this year, as you know, last week, school committee passed a mandatory mask mandate and then afterwards, DESI passed a mandatory mask mandate. So we're all on the same page. So we will have mandatory face coverings inside school buildings for all vaccinated or unvaccinated. Masks will not be required outdoors and social distancing during lunch for students who are not vaccine-aged eligible. So we're going to do our best to social distance our students during lunchtime. So I'm going to hand it over to Adam, our Assistant Superintendent, and he will discuss everything COVID-related.
Thank you, Dr. Abeta. So we're going to continue our testing through the DESI testing program. It's streamlined this year and there are actually three components that I'd like to talk about. So we are going to have COVID safety checks for students and staff. I do want to stress, they are not mandatory, but we do strongly encourage all people to participate. The test is quick and non-invasive. It's a saliva sample, so you just need to produce about an ounce of saliva and it goes into a little tube and you put the cap on and you're done. We will send them home with students the day before the samples are collected. And even if a student forgets to bring it back, then they can also produce a sample on-site that morning. We also have, and I'm very excited about this, last year, if a student was identified as a close contact to someone who was positive, they would need to quarantine. That would result in missing school. If a parent signs a consent, and we have digital links to that going out, they can participate in our testing and also our test and stay program. So if a student is identified as a close contact, we will reach out to families to let them know, but we'll also be able to give them a rapid antigen test, which gives us a result in 15 minutes. And provided that the student doesn't have symptoms and comes out negative, they can remain in school, which is really important to us, because it really, it really hurt to have to keep kids out of the building if they were identified as a close contact and none of them actually came back and tested positive. So we actually had kids without COVID being quarantined. So with the test and stay, that will stop that from happening if and only if we have that digital consent completed. Next slide, please. And the last thing I'll talk about is contact tracing and quarantine protocols. So the protocols for responding to the COVID-19 scenarios are updated and streamlined. A couple of differences that jump out, there are no close contacts outside. And as long as you're masked and at least three feet apart, that would not be considered a close contact that would need to quarantine. Districts in the statewide testing program are using other approved diagnostic tests will be able to implement that new test and stay protocol in lieu of requiring asymptomatic close contacts to quarantine. Students that are symptomatic would need to quarantine. And they would have the option to remain in school. The thing with the test and stay, we'd have to do it for five days straight to take into account the gestation period of the virus. And lastly, I, I'm so happy and proud of our community to share these numbers with the school committee and anyone who's listening. Our vaccination rates are far above the state average in the city of Chelsea. Broken down, our 12- to 15-year-olds, 65%. And broken down, our twelve to fifteen-year-olds, sixty-five percent of our twelve to fifteen-year-olds are now fully vaccinated. Um, and eighty-five percent have already received their first dose. Um, that is far above the state average. And for our sixteen to nineteen-year-olds, we're at seventy-five percent have been fully vaccinated. And ninety-five percent of our sixteen and to nineteen-year-olds have received their first dose. Um, so I strongly encourage, um, this to continue. Uh, we're doing a great job with this. I want to recognize the city of Chelsea and the Health Department, uh, City Manager Amber Sino, um, for dedicating lots of time and effort to make vaccinations readily available, uh, to our community. And, uh, it's, it's paid off because this is a, uh, key to keeping our students safe. And my last thing before I turn it over to Ms. Lamboy, um, is that as, as we have our eleven-year-olds having their twelfth birthday, um, as a nice little birthday present, I encourage you to get that vaccine the day that you turn twelve. And with that, next slide, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lamboy.
Wonderful news. Um, so the investments that we made last year in, um, our schools are going to continue to help us as the pandemic continues. Um, we put in place thorough cleaning and sanitation procedures last year. And we had at that time hired temporary services to assist us with cleaning high-touch surfaces, bathrooms, cafeteria tables. And we will be continuing those added temporary services. Um, they're grant-funded, which is, um, very helpful. It's not impacting our other budget priorities. Um, we have hand sanitizer throughout the school buildings when the students enter in various locations in the hallway, uh, hand sanitizer in all of the classrooms. We also have standing sinks that, um, can be used to wash hands, um, to reduce the amount of lines in the bathroom when people just need to, to wash their hands. Um, as you know, we invested in air cleaning equipment for every single classroom and every single office in our schools and also in City Hall. Um, we have filters for all of those and a little extra surplus in case we need it. Um, if something breaks down, we will be equipped to swap it out at a moment's notice. Um, we have been working with our HVAC, um, maintenance team to make sure that all the filters are cleaned properly and our ventilation systems are doing well. Um, we actually replaced the entire systems at the Williams Middle School last spring. So, um, that's brand-new equipment in that building. We're in the design for some others as well, um, which will, um, over the long term through grant funding, help us continue to upgrade our systems. Um, we are in the process of, um, purchasing, uh, medical tents for isolation spaces for each of the buildings. It's not strictly required by Desi, but in consultation with Adam, the lady and the nursing team, we think it would be beneficial to have these available should a positive student be identified. And we're waiting for the parent to pick them up. Um, in our buses, we will continue to have assigned seats. So when parents do get the tags for their children, they will have seats identified. We're going to ask that they try to line the kids up outside of the bus in the proper seat order, which would really help with boarding. Um, and the windows will be open regardless of weather condition. We have provided the bus company with, um, ponchos should they be traveling during rainy days. Um, and again, we have, um, PPE for every classroom, um, including masks, wipes, paper towels, sanitizing spray, gloves. And we have a process by which teachers and staff can let the custodial team know exactly what they need so that we can get that to them in a timely way. And I will transfer it on. So it's stuck. To, um, our HR Director Christine Lee.
Good evening, everybody. I'm excited to report on our staffing. Celebrations, really. So right now, we are at eighty-two percent fill rate of all vacancies, including teaching positions, parapositions. Um, and so this is, uh, good news. This data is from last week, so even higher as of today. I don't have the exact number, but, um, our principals and administrative teams have worked really hard to make sure that there's an excellent educator in front of our kids for day one. Um, and so we're really excited about this number and just all the hard work everyone has put into fill all of our new positions. Because as you know, um, we've added many positions this year. The second celebration is, um, we just concluded our new teacher orientation. We onboarded over a hundred and ten new teachers. And this includes some folks who were internal and were, um, promoted, uh, to teaching positions. But we did have a ton of, um, new staff join our teaching force, workforce this year. And we're very excited about them. Um, and I wanted to give a special thanks to our mentor leads, Carla, Carla Eden, Matt Bennington, Alana Asher, for all the hard work to, um, prepare and organize everything. And of course, to all of our coordinators and coaches and leads who also help make the week, uh, successful for everybody. Um, we also hired eleven new administrators, um, so assistant principals, central office folks. And so we're very excited about our new administrators. We held a new orientation for them on Wednesday morning, um, at the Clark Ave. And where they were all just very excited about, uh, their new roles in the district. And a few updates about our pipeline programs. We, uh, were able to support seven of our paraprofessionals to become promoted to teaching positions through our Teacher Pathway Program, uh, which is exciting because some of these, uh, paraprofessionals have been in the district for many years. And, um, they are very excited to be in front of students. Some of them are Chelsea grads. And so we're really excited for this new cohort of, um, of educators. And we also, um, as you remember, we added, uh, an extension of our pipeline program, uh, our parent to para program. And we had thirteen people who were admitted to the program. Um, and about nine have gone through some preparation and training. And six of our parents have been hired into paraprofessional roles. And so we're really excited of all the hard work of all of our, our staff, um, our administrators and hiring these excellent educators. And we're just excited to, um, continue this exciting work of, um, not only diversifying our workforce, but bringing in people who are from Chelsea, who know the community, who understand our families, who are our parents. Um, and so we're just really excited about the work and the direction that we're going in.
Great. Thank you, team. Um, it is a team. And, um, if you have any questions or comments, we're here to answer.
Like to make comments?
Go ahead, Ms. Villas.
No, I'm just, um, amazed that our rate of, um, vaccination, um, that's great news. As I know families are eager to send their children to school. They still have that anxiety. Um, I know teachers must be feeling the same thing, um, you know, after being gone for so long and coming back. Um, it's a little bit nerve-wracking for everybody, but, um, it was great to see the numbers of vaccination that we have and even within our city, um, you know, that gives me some peace of mind. And again, I say we are going to feel a little bit nervous and we just have to be patient with each other and, um, just take it day by day. And I'm also super excited about the pathways program and seeing that our paras are now teachers. This is great. This is a great way too to retain them within the district because we invested in them. And they're going to stay with us. And like, um, Ms. Lee said, you know, these are people from the community that could really relate to our parents and our students. Um, so it's wonderful. And also the opportunity for our parents, um, to go through that program and also become paras. It's amazing. Um, you know, the resolution, these parents probably would have never gotten a chance because they can't afford to go to school or do anything. And now we're here opening opportunities for them. And, um, I just hope we could continue to get the funding we need to keep doing these amazing things, um, not just for our students, but for the whole family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Villas. Any other comments?
Mrs. Carlisle here would like to say a couple of words.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations to the HR department for hiring more teachers to make sure that the classrooms are going to be well-stocked with teachers and paras. Congratulations to Adam. Delaney for keeping up with.
You're muted, Ms. Carlisle.
I'm so glad that Adam Delaney is keeping us up with the information about, um, the COVID. And especially for his little notes telling us about when it does happen. Did you hear me brag about our HR department? Did you hear that part?
Yes.
I'm bragging about our HR department. Christine, that's you, honey. Thank you so much for all the work you do trying to get the good teachers and the paras into the school system. You do a wonderful job. Thank you so much for that. And of course, Amy, you're doing a wonderful job. So I don't have to tell you that all the time. Congratulations to the whole team for getting us back in a safe way into the schools.
Thank you, Ms. Carlisle. Team, I'd also like to echo everything that has been stated already. Um, as I look at my screen, I see all of these wonderful individuals who go day in and day out, sleep little hours, I'm sure, just to ensure that our students are happy, are feel safe, and get, are getting the education that they, that they all deserve. And so thank you for this beautiful Chelsea family that we have. Um, to Ms. Lee, thank you so much for creating these pathways. Thank you to you and your team, uh, for creating these pathways for our families. And to Mr. Jennings for all of your work behind the scenes and making sure that our teachers of color, our staff of color feel supported as a teacher of color. And, you know, I, I just want to express how important your role is. And even though, you know, we didn't get a slide, um, with, with all of the work that you're doing, it's okay. I know we're going to get updates. But you are doing the work and I just want to shout you out, um, because it is so important for our buildings to not only be inclusive for our students, but for those who work with our students. Um, and so thank you. Thank you to everyone. Mister Lovato, thank you for, for not quitting on us. You're still here. Uh, that means you're doing a great job. Um, thank you so much, um, for joining our team and, and bringing all of your expertise. And so the, I just feel really appreciative and, and grateful. Um, and I wanted to express that from the bottom of my heart. Um, and with that team, I think we're done. Um, next up is announcements. Um, but before, before we, we do that, I'd like to dedicate a moment of silence for Sandel Rodriguez, uh, one of our students who passed away last week due to an act of violence. So if you can join me in bowing our heads and giving, um, Sandel and her family one minute of silence. Thank you. Thank you, team.
You, excuse me, Madam Chair. Um, I'd like to do, I'd like to do a moment of silence for, for, um, I don't know if you've been home and listened to the news, but thirteen of our people, uh, in the military got killed today due to that suicide bombing, bombing overseas. To their parents and to all their relatives, my prayers go out to you. Yeah. They're out there protecting us and we should pray for them every day. But I'd like to have a moment of silence for the thirteen military men and women who died today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other announcements before wrapping up this meeting? Alrighty, team. Thank you so much for joining us. Thank you to our team. Um, and welcome back to school. Have a great first week. Um, and, and yeah, I wish I can hug you all, but I will hug you through the screen and wish you all a happy first day of school. Uh, Ms. Carlisle, would you like to say something?
Well, I was just going to say be safe for the first day of school and for the rest of the year. We will make sure that you are safe. We are doing our job as members of the school committee and the Stanford City Hall and the superintendent and her staff are doing a wonderful job to make you safe. Just make, make sure you wear those masks. So everybody else can be safe. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carlisle. Team, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting at six fifty-nine?
A motion to adjourn?
I'll second that motion.
Alrighty, team. Meeting adjourned at six fifty-nine. Everyone, please be safe and thank you so much for joining us. Good night.
Bye.
Bye.